Are we live? Okay, thank you. So I guess we will jump right in with. General assistance, which is on page one forty two. Hopefully, everybody got the schedule with the page numbers. It is on the screen as well for everybody to see, including those people that may be watching on live stream. Reminder with this budget with the general assistance budget that seventy seventy percent of the expenses are reimbursed by the state. And those expenses are the ones that are in the gray shaded areas that be on the budget, both on the screen and on the printout. So down under the revenues and we'll get to that, but you'll see the GA seventy percent reimbursement line. So if we were to decrease any of the expense lines in those gray shaded areas or increase them. Then we would have to do a corresponding decrease or increase under the revenue line. As well. So. With that being said, there's not a lot to talk about here. We do have just about a two percent increase again with the stipends for the GA administrator and deputy administrator. Which is in line with percent for the cola for everybody else. Down under the. Assistance as being granted or being budgeted to be granted, the mortgage and rental assistance line. Which is line thirty three sixty and Megan, if you can make that, if you can make your a little bit bigger, that'd be great. Is that better for everybody? So we've got budgeted ten thousand dollars in that line instead of fifteen thousand. If you look at the previous. Three years, actual expenditures, pretty much all over the place, but decreasing, which is good. And if you. This year during the pandemic, we had no idea what to expect with general assistance requests. And if you notice in the expense lines. For the categories, we didn't spend a heck of a lot. And that's mostly due, we think, to all the assistance that's been provided from the state and federal government. From the various programs as well as the. Evictions were delayed. And all of that sort of thing. So we have decreased it. This is one of those budgets that we're allowed to over overspend. In those lines should we need to? We do also have. Some separate donation accounts that we can, we can tap into as well. Obviously, we like to use the general assistance funds first because those are reimbursed at the seventy percent level from the state. Down under the. Revenues. You'll see a new line called use of donated funds. So we have. So fairly substantial amount in donations from. Very generous people in Rockport that donate to general assistance program. And those funds are. The majority of them are not tied to. The categories of general assistance, but are tied for things that might be outside of the program. What we've budgeted for here is that we will. Essentially. Cover all of the expenses of the of the actual. General assistance items. With the seventy percent reimbursement from the state, which is the line underneath that. And then making it up with the donations from the donation from the donated funds, I should say revenue from the donated funds. That way it helps offset. The amount that gets raised from taxes somewhat. Questions? And I can't generally see everybody, so. If I can expand my screen here.
Bill?
Yes.
This is what I do. And I'm maybe my my math mind's not working very well tonight. So the use of the donated funds does not impact the seventy percent reimbursement from the from the state, am I right? It's it's basically bonus money donated by local by local citizens.
Right? So so the thirty percent left over for us to make up, if you will, for those for those general assistance items. Is up to the town to how how to fund that, whether it's through tax dollars or another method.
Okay, and can I ask one other question? So those funds that were donated by citizens in town. Are they they earmark for? Specifically for the Didi?
Yes.
Okay, so it it not to say that I we want to reallocate the money, but. I'm just thinking of the money, that kind of money being donated. Doesn't always make a hell of a lot of sense because. Again, you're getting a seventy percent reimbursement from the state, but that's just that's just my soapbox. I'll get off it. Thanks.
Yeah, and it always depends on the year, you know, I mean, sometimes we have to dip into that. Again, those donated funds help us with items that might not necessarily be. Fit under the general assistance categories that are outside that that we wouldn't normally get for um get get any reimbursement for. Um, you know, we'll say it's a. A car repair or something like that. Somebody needs a car repaired so they can get back and forth to work or something along those lines. Well, that's not generally covered by general assistance. But it makes sense for us. In some cases, obviously, to. To help with that repair because then we have somebody that's ably employed and making money and hopefully not asking for further assistance. Other questions? Again, if I don't see you, you know, speak up. Do my best to look at, look at the screen and try to find and see everybody.
This is an easy one.
Yeah, it is pretty easy. Okay, next up is assessing. Which is on page one hundred and twenty six. Before we get into the details of this, what I'll say and Carrie is here as well on the call. What I'll say is that the administrative assistant position has gone through another transformation. In the assessing department, it was previously shared with. Planning and the police department. And we realized that that wasn't working out so well, so we did make a transition. So that now the the finance payroll clerk and administrative assistants is assistant is now. Providing assistance to the assessing department at fourteen hours a week. So. That way, so you'll see an inordinate increase in line twenty two oh five here. Because of the number of hours that are there increased there, we've added some to that position. And also the wage is slightly different as well, and you'll notice that under. The employee benefits to where there's some increased cost there. That's in relation to that staff change. Additionally, under on line thirty sixty under purchased and contractual services while we're talking about staff. We're proposing to add another half day of time for the contracted assistant to the assessor. We contract with Camden for currently one day a week. The assessor originally had asked. I believe for an additional day and I said, well, let's try a half a day and see if that works. So that's budgeted in here as well, which is an additional ninety five hundred dollars approximately. Those really are the major changes in this budget. I certainly can look at others, and if you've got questions. Please feel free to to ask those. Bob?
How many years has it been since we've had a readout?
Carrie, why don't you answer that question? Because we are looking at doing some. Adjustments coming up. So Carrie, why don't you answer that?
We did it in two thousand fifteen, Bob. It was six years.
Okay.
And we are looking at it now. Things have gone out of whack, so we are looking at it now.
And is it? It is, is the, is the impending? Adjustments being made, looking to be made in house, or is it looking to be made through contract?
Through contract and together in house, so their contract won't cost as much because I'll work with them.
Okay. So you're looking at that in the next couple of years or?
Well, Bill and I have been talking about it. I and I think we're on the same page there about talking about it for next year. Bill, is that right?
Starting in, starting in FY twenty three.
Twenty three. Okay, that's why I'm not seeing it.
Yeah, that's why you don't see it here. Yeah, and we've got a, it's a staged approach. Carrie, if you want to, if you want to talk more about that, you certainly can.
Sure. Well, we we used KRT appraisal last time and and I think they did an excellent job. And so we we talked to them this year. And they gave us, they gave us a memo outlining different tiers of service that we could go with them. One being like an à la carte where we can do certain things. Another one. Is on a reduced. You know, the range is full measure and list. À la carte, and there are some steps in between. And so we're looking for something that. Customizes to exactly what we need.
So are we just leaving money on the table? I mean, is the idea that the evaluations have gone up substantially in Rockport? Since it's twenty sixteen and by the longer we wait to do this. The more money we're sort of just leaving on the table for.
That's right. Yeah, that's that's why I put, that's why I propose us to do this. Yeah, exactly right.
Yeah.
But we also, just to put a caveat with that, because of the pandemic, we're obviously seeing, as I'm sure everybody's seen the news reports. About the real estate sales going through the roof, both in sales and price. So in discussions with Carrie and I'm sure with KRT, we had the same discussions Carrie did. That we really need to see if this is a sustainable. Bubble or not before we can really go in and do a reassessment, because if we. Go in and do a reassessment now and then the bubble bursts. Then we're too high and then we're gonna have to go back and do another reassessment to follow that right up. And certainly that doesn't make any sense to to spend the money twice.
Right. It would be a misstep to go a little too early.
That's yes. So we should, we should know within this time next year. You know, we should know if we're, if we're looking at this similar proposal or if it's a little bit different or. Or whatnot.
Bill, if I might?
Yes, Mark.
I know. Excuse me, Carrie's previous assistant Hannah. We were training her towards being a more proficient. Help for Carrie. And. You know, not that I don't believe that we have good assistance from Camden. But you know, I would much rather think that we would try again for our own employees. To train them. And then that thirty thousand or twenty eight five that we're spending can be done. For somebody that actually works for us. You know, so I'm wondering, is there any? Training in the future for anyone in house? That we can then. Fortify with a little extra money.
Carrie, I'll let you answer that as well, since you've been here obviously longer than I have. And I know Hannah had had gone through some extensive training and.
She did. Hannah Hannah got her assessive certification. I I don't know that that is something Molly's interested in. She has been learning quickly and she's interested. But I I at this point, I don't know if that's a direction she wants to go in. And and I have, I've, we've, you know, we've had this discussion before. I I don't really look at Caitlin as a foreigner. It's it's she's a very capable assessor. She works very hard and does very well.
There's no question, no question about that. I'm just, I'm trying to find a way to dangle a carrot in front of some of our own employees. To perhaps make them want to stay here longer by having more money and more challenges. There's no question. That she's.
I hear you. I.
One, one of the issues, though, that we do have is just capacity. I mean, that. When you. We've taken those fourteen hours and and pushed them on to. The finance payroll clerk administrative assistant from from the planning side. And it just you get to the point where you you just don't, I mean, you have forty hours, so. There's only so many hours in the week that we can have the employees do do work. So you know, I see this as another experiment currently. And you know, going forward, if it, I mean, it's been going very well, which is a good thing and nothing has been. No work has been suffering on on either side of the equation. So this might be the solution to what? What we were looking for before when we when we split the different position three ways. So I, you know, again, in in another six months, I think we'll have a much better, better idea and an answer about, you know, some of those questions, Mark, because. We'll have that much more experience. We this, we've been only doing this for. Couple of months, I think. I mean, it hasn't been. Hasn't been very long.
You've been on split shifts that whole, a lot of that time.
Right, exactly. I was just gonna say that. Other, other questions? Okay. Thanks, Carrie. Up next is the harbor. That's on page one eighty two. And we do have the harbor master with us as well as the chair of the harbor committee, Sam Temple. So they can help me answer questions. There are, there are several lines in this budget that are. That it needs some explanation. And. When I was going through this yesterday, I noticed that there were some errors occasionally in this and. I apologize for those. Those are mine and mine alone. The deputy harbor master line, line twenty one fifteen. That line should. Should say the same as the previous year seventeen eight thirty. Which are, which is the, I'm not sure why we went to the nineteen thousand. I had this conversation with Abby earlier today and we were trying to. Retrace our steps and. Couldn't figure out why we had nineteen thousand in there. So. That should say seventeen eight thirty, both in the department head and the and the manager's budget. Going back down through, so under cleaning services, the line. Three zero zero six. So we've talked about this previously in other departments. This is for, I'm gonna call it COVID cleaning. So this is for professional custodial services for the. For the buildings at the harbor. Particularly the restroom facilities. There wasn't any funding previously. We certainly did. Sign a contract with a with a custodian to provide those services. And it's, it's important to make sure that we have those on a daily basis, which is what we have in place. Another, another area, line three zero zero eight. I'm gonna ask Megan this question because we've got this line here under purchased and contractual services, and then we have another COVID line under supplies, which is also two thousand dollars. And I think there may be a double entry, Megan, unless I'm missing something.
The three zero zero eight is if we have additional deep cleaning that we have to do or. Another service that we have to implement that we can't do ourselves. At the harbor and then the supply line is for. Mask, hand sanitizer. Sanitary wipes, things like that.
Signage and stuff I'll add to that.
Yeah, okay.
Bill, if I might?
Yes, Mark.
The, you know, and I'd have to go back and look, but is that particular type of an item? A two thousand dollar item, is that sprinkled? In highway, in PD, in. At the library, at the town office? I mean, are they, do they all have, you know, a two thousand dollar line?
It's a different, if it's a different amount depending on, depending on the the department.
And I just was wondering, I mean, if you add all those up and I'd have to look at them, but. Given that two thousand dollar number, that's safe to assume. That you have eight to ten thousand dollars set aside for. Something that may or may not happen. I'm wondering if that's. One thing that could be compiled in, in one place. Under your. Purview. And maybe cut in half.
I don't know about cutting it in half. I mean, we, you know, we've, we've spent.
I get it.
Yeah, we've spent purposely, we obviously had a line added, if you will, you know, in in the budget so that we could track those COVID expenses so that. You know, we are still hoping that we might get reimbursement from, from FEMA, but we don't know what that's gonna cover. Because we're still in the state of emergency. So. So the feeling was, and I had said to the department heads, we've got a budget. Something for COVID and really don't know. When or what?
So if we raise it and don't use it, there's a potential that we could get reimbursed for it. Even though we didn't use it.
If we don't use it, we can't get reimbursed. We can only get reimbursed for actual expenses. If we raise it and we don't use it, it just will go into unassigned fund balance at the end of the year. And then be able to be utilized, you know, for the.
To Mark's particular question, this department is the only one that has contractual COVID line. So there's only. Two thousand dollars in the entire budget for contractual services due to COVID. And then the supply line, there's a total of five thousand dollars. In the entire budget that's allocated to COVID supplies.
I see the fifty four sixteen is two thousand.
Right.
Where's the other? You said there's five thousand in total?
In total, yes.
In the other departments. Which is what you had asked before, Mark.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Moving, moving on. The electricity, water sewer lines, the utilities lines, you'll see some decreases there. That's based on. Actual estimations. Under the boat repairs and maintenance thirty six oh two, if you looked in your in in the budget notes, there's some explanations for that. Which if I'll dig my notes out now. For those that might might be watching at home, so. That includes winterizing the skiff and the harbor masters boat. The skiff does need a tune up, which is six, six hundred, eight hundred dollars. The harbor masters boat needs to be hauled to refinish and paint the bottom. And that will be done in house, the painting and refinishing. And it does need to be relettered as well. So as an additional three hundred dollars for relettering. Building repairs and maintenance, you'll see a big jump there. So. This, this could have fit under capital items or it could have been under building repairs and maintenance. There's fifteen thousand dollars in here to. Reshingle the harbor masters roof. So it could have been under capital or it could have been. I I put it in here as building repairs and maintenance. That's been a project that's been put off for a few years and you really need to. Have that done. Before we have issues that we might run into with that.
So. Yep, who's first?
We've got, I mean, that that single job. In my mind ought to qualify as capital because it's gonna life expectancy longer than three years. It's an in kind replacement. But anyway, if if you can get any advantage, put it in capital. I would think it would be good.
There's really no, no advantage gained, but you know, it doesn't matter where we put it. We could put it in capital. It certainly does have a. Longer life.
Yeah, let's leave it there for now then, if there's no advantage.
But I see, Bill, we have a, under capital, we have seventy five twelve. A reserve line for the building. How much is in that reserve?
Megan?
I'm looking it up. It'll just take me a minute.
Yeah. And we certainly could put the fifteen thousand in there. I mean, that's.
Well, I'm just, I mean, if there's more in the reserve that we could use to lower that seventeen, I'd be certainly in favor of it, but.
There's forty six hundred dollars in the building reserve.
So going, going back up. Line fifty three eighty signs, that's additional signage. There is an increase in one of the. One of the morning fees or daily fee. That we'll have to have signs for. And that's, that's in your notes as well. The fifty four sixteen is the COVID supplies line, which Megan explained, which is the masks, the hand sanitizer, the wipes, all of that type of thing. And then more importantly, or bigger numbers, I should say, down under capital items, seventy four thirty five piling replacement is going from five thousand to six thousand. This basically. Pilings, the pressure treated pilings are about six hundred dollars each. We did have an analysis done by the engineers that gave us. Basically, their their opinions of many things at the harbor, one of those being the the pilings and and give us a plan for replacing them and. This is to to implement that plan or begin implementing that plan, I should say. Under float replacement. There's twenty four thousand dollars there that is offset on the revenue side with a. Use from the capital fund. To to replace some floats. The harbor float reserve is the next line seventy five oh five. You'll see that that's at nineteen thousand, an increase of ten thousand from last year. In last year's budget. Before the pandemic cuts, we had nineteen thousand budgeted there. Because we do need to build that up as we continue to use it. So we cut ten thousand dollars as part of the pandemic cuts. And so I'm recommending that we put that back in there at the appropriate level. And the same goes for. Line seventy. Five eleven. Which is the harbor boat hull reserve. So we cut that last year. And my recommendation is to put the level back up to where where it should be. On the revenue side.
Bill, just a minute.
Yes. You're cutting out Denise, I, so you're.
To just the haul on the harbor boat and not just the harbor boat as a whole, whole boat?
I didn't. I didn't catch all of that statement because you were cutting out. So if you could repeat that.
Yeah, I'll try. Sorry about that. I guess I'm a little far away from the internet here. Is that any better? Can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
I'm just wondering why we're just referring to it as a whole reserve rather than the entire boat.
Engine reserve is above it.
Yeah. The engine reserve is the line directly above that seventy five ten.
Right. Okay. And then the rest of the body of the boat isn't. Anyway, I'm being probably too particular, but it just occurs to me that we're, we've talked about how we're gonna paint the hull. And now we're setting aside money for. I mean, well.
For for its replacement eventually.
Of the hull.
Well, the boat other than the engine.
Okay, I'm having, I I have to say this, I'm having a little fun with this because some, some select board in their wise. You know, wise decision said we ought to have a hull reserve and we ought to have an engine reserve. Instead of just having a boat repair reserve. So.
Right.
Mission accomplished at work.
Doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, I will add just that we have replaced one engine that about two engines will last the hull of the boat. So it's on a different timeframe. So that might have been some of the logic behind behind it then.
Bill?
Yes, Paul.
The harbor reserve seventy five oh five. Are the floats. I would assume some of that will be used to replace the floats that in line. Well, where did that go? Whatever that other line was to replace the floats.
Direct directly above that, that seventy five oh five, you see float replacement line. So that's the use of the reserve to completely offsets the expense, the twenty four thousand. And then this is the the nineteen thousand dollar. Is the deposit into that float reserve so that, because we are on that schedule of replacement and this can use that.
Okay.
Yep.
We're using what's in there and then replacing.
A part of it.
Okay.
And just so everyone's aware of what we're going to replace with that twenty four thousand that's due to be replaced is the commercial fishermen's floats. Are due to be replaced. We've gotten an extra couple of years out of them, but it is time. So next spring, if all goes well. That will be in line.
I'll, I'll speak up on that one. This has come up with the harbor committee a couple of times, so. The town is replacing. The the floats which it leases to the commercial fishermen. Well, I've. It's, it's been the recommendation of the committee on a couple of occasions that the town. Look at the. Budget for the leaseholder. Least gains versus the least expenses there. Placement of those floats will be a. Tiny example of of that budget, you know, probably not making ends meet.
Couple of other things that I wanted to mention before. We close out of the harbor, um. That I should have mentioned earlier. So online. Thirty-six oh, um, sorry. I probably should have my glasses on. Line thirty-six ten computers, computer repairs and maintenance. There is a fourteen hundred dollar, um, increase there. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because there is some debate about. This. So what this item is, um, is for a webcam to be placed at the harbor that we would be able to. Show the harbor on our website. In discussions with Abby about the budget, um, she did get quotes for, uh. I'm gonna say a real security, uh, camera system, um, as, and I had asked her to do that. Um, because we have had some incidents is down at the harbor, both near the harbor masters building and in the parking lot and on the other end. Uh, of the harbor, on the commission, on the commercial fisherman's side. So the quotes for the real security system. Um, I believe it's around seventeen thousand dollars. Abby, correct me if I'm.
Four, fourteen total, seven on each side.
That's right. Okay. So seven thousand dollars basically for each side. I didn't include that in the budget, um, but I had said that I would bring that up. For discussion and. Questions about that. Again, it's not in this budget, um. Sam, I don't know if you have any thoughts on the security cams versus the webcam. Obviously, the webcam is very. I'm not gonna say it's a minor expense at fourteen hundred dollars, but it's a lot less than. Uh, fourteen thousand for security systems, or Jeff Hamilton, if you have thoughts as well.
Sam, I'll start and then you pile on. How's that, buddy?
I'm good.
The, uh. The quote that Abby brought to the harbor committee the other night, fourteen, yeah, I think it's money very well spent. We have. We could talk about it when we get into the details of what we're gonna do with this. Budget in terms of adds and subtracts, but we have spent many years talking about securities. Cameras in the harbor and haven't ever done anything. And, uh, we've had enough issues down there and Abby could summarize those, I am sure. That would very much warrant the addition of security cameras. I'll leave it at that.
I can, I compiled just for reference, I compiled a list of the ones that were reportable police reports and I have. Twenty incidents, um, between the, my tenure, so since two thousand and eight. Um, that at least got filed, uh, as a police reports and I have that list if anybody wants to see it. I won't take your time going through it, but.
And, and, yeah, it's certainly been supported by the harbor committee and. So there, there's a number of, you know, well-known examples of people who have lost, you know, valuable items. Been. Been something that's come up over the last five years or so, a number of times and, and full support on the committee for that.
Yeah, Garland.
Bill, just a quick question, uh, how confident are we on the price tag for the new roof? Do we have a proposal or is that just a ballpark figure?
That, that was, uh, that was a figure I had gotten probably two years ago for the capital improvement. Plan that was a sort of a rough estimate, they measured and checked out, but the fifteen thousand dollars was a, um, was a, was a two-year old. Quotation.
Thank you.
And so if we have, um, obviously if, if that's included in the budget, that'll be one thing that's, that's put out to bid. And we do have a little bit of, of leeway in the building reserve account with that forty-six hundred dollars that's in there. So if it's over fifteen thousand, then we'd be able to, to still, um, get the project done. Bob?
Uh, yeah, just a comment about the security system. And I'm, you know, I, I do think that it's probably valid. Um, I think this is all gonna, this budget's all gonna come down to priorities and where the committee wants it to be. But it's a good chunk of change and I can see where it's needed, but. You know, the town of Rockport can't, can't keep having six and seven percent increases in our budget every year. So. Um, whatever the committee decides, I know how I'll vote.
Any other comments or questions about the harbor? Before I, on the expense side, anyway, I'll go to the revenues. So we can look at those, um. So under line, um, R zero eight zero three, the commercial float and parking. This is, uh, actually based on what we should be collecting, uh, from those, the, the commercial float usages, uh, Sam was just mentioning a little while ago. The, uh, line oh eight oh six, the merchandise sales, um. Obviously, we haven't been, haven't sold hardly anything during the last year because of the pandemic. Um, where. We've reduced what we expect that we're going to sell again, because probably by the time we get into full si- full swing this year, it'll be the fall. Hopefully before then, but, um. Hopefully we can, we can gain some of those sales back. And then next year, hopefully we'll have even more. Um, overnight docking line oh eight oh nine. You see a decrease in there of about, um. Twenty-five hundred from the fifteen thousand it's budget for this year. Again, I'm being more optimistic than Abby was being. I'm hoping that we can get more, um, more dockage.
Bill?
Yeah.
Uh, not to put in another plug, but I'll put in another plug. Cameras pointed in the right direction will get more than cover their cost revenue with. Uh, people that float in and tie up to that dock after eight o'clock at night and are gone by six o'clock in the morning.
Poachers.
Marine Park rental fees, line zero eight twenty-three. Again, this is reduced because we're, because of COVID, um, certainly we, we just aren't renting out the park. Like we have been, again, we don't expect to do much July, August, September of this year. Hopefully maybe next May, June, um, of twenty twenty-two, we, we'll be able to get some revenue there. Um, and you see under, uh, second line from the bottom, use of float reserve, the twenty-four thousand dollars. So that's, um. Um, as Helen was, was asking about, that's where we have the use of the reserve to be able to. Cover that expense of those, um, of those floats. Other questions or comments at this point on the harbor budget, Denise?
Uh, and I'm just following up on Sam's reference. So if we're getting thirty-six hundred dollars in revenue from the commercial lease. And then it's a twenty-four thousand dollar sticker price to put in the, replace the floats, is that? I mean, obviously that's over a longer period of time, but I guess that's sort of an assessment the harbor committee makes that we're getting. Sort of that those rates are, uh, appropriately leveraged against the. Commercial space that we lease.
I would say the harbor committee has not made that assessment and has felt that. Select board is better suited or the town manager is better suited to negotiate. But, but I do think it's worth looking at the, the value provided. To the commercial business of the lobster fishermen. Perhaps with some reflection of the. The total, um, you know, landings, uh, for that site, you know, in dollars. Been apparent to the committee that, uh, that the town is, you know, shouldering, you know, a, a burden there.
Quick question, Abby, what's the, what's the life expectancy of the commercial floats?
Twenty years is the sort of factory life expectancy.
Twenty years?
Yeah. We've gotten, uh, quite a bit more out of the ones that are there now than twenty years, but that's the, you know, that's kind of what we budget as, that, the, a good number.
Yep.
So, if I may, the, um, the committee, uh, maybe a year or two ago. Moved to a model where the leaseholder. Is now responsible for their own dumpster bill and their own porta potty bill.
Correct.
And. That was, that was one model that, uh. Thought perhaps had merit.
Hey, Bill, uh, is Jared, just a question on the har- the mooring fees and Bill, thanks for answering all those questions I had for you. On email.
Of course.
Has the harbor committee discussed? The, the mooring fees, if it's correct, considering the. Uh, waiting list for moorings, uh, the, the neighboring towns, and then my understanding there was a large increase in two thousand eighteen. Instead of doing a large increase all at once, just do incremental every year. So I was curious what your. You know, if you folks talked about it and thought about that approach.
Yes, certainly the, the committee looks at those fees, um, and you have, um. Camden and Rockland on a, on a, um, spreadsheet when we're doing that. Didn't remember the increase in twenty eighteen being. Dramatic for moorings, but may, maybe I'm misremembering that.
It ended up being about twenty percent when you added the length, uh, the overall addition of the length.
Jared, the, the mooring fees are reviewed or the whole harbor fee schedule is reviewed by the committee annually. And then the recommendation goes up with the select board for, for.
I guess I would, I, I would. So they're gonna be the same as last year?
I, I believe they're not changed.
Yeah, I would, I would just challenge that or throw a, a, a thought out to the committee on that, considering. You know, we're talking about doing real estates, uh, reassessments and things. Sure, there's people that have moved here that. A new assessment, it's not gonna matter if you increase their taxes. Um, but there's folks that have lived here a long time that are on a fixed, uh, budget that it'll make a huge difference that. You know, the house next door selling for two hundred thousand dollars more, all of a sudden, it's not, you know, they haven't done anything. Um, but the folks that do own a vessel. You know, there, there's certain people that are doing better in this situation than others, is, I guess is what I'm saying. And I think a lot of us, once this is behind us, expect to pay. A little bit more. For dining out. Uh, leisure activities when I go to saddleback, if I go boating, any of those things.
The, the committee, you know, that's, that's definitely making the harbor equitable is a. Primary theme in, in the committee's discussions. And, you know, I couldn't tell which way you were leaning for most of what you were saying, and I think that gets at the issue very well. The, you know, the, the committee's. You know. Take on that has been that, you know, we shouldn't value the use of the harbor differently if you're doing it from a. Eight-foot skiff or from the mackerel fishing float or from a fifty-foot yacht and, and. Goal is to make it accessible to everybody. Or as you suggest, looking at the, the surrounding towns has been, you know, a primary way to do that. And, and the goal to, to keep it equitable for, for people who else, as you suggest, are, are feeling. The impacts of this in a variety of ways.
Bob, Duke?
Well, just, I, I'll just piggyback on what Jared just said. I mean. I, I don't want to bring back old history, but when I was on the select board for years, the, the harbor supported itself. And I, and it did for over a decade. Um, and I realize this is a different world today. But you guys have just spoken about, uh, two fairly substantial needs, uh, that's gonna impact the budget. And, uh, no effort has been made in my view, other than, I mean, more, the moorings in Rockport Harbor is one of the hardest damn things to get. I mean, there's a waiting list, right? And you guys aren't even thinking about increasing mooring fees to help pay for some of these needs. It just seems like that's. You're being blind to the needs and passing it on to the taxpayer. I just don't agree with that. I know it's a policy thing. I realize it's a select board. And it's the commit, in the harbor committee, but I really think you guys ought to think that over.
Well, that's, might be a little bit, uh. The, the harbor committee reviews those fees on an annual basis and also knows. Where the harbor is from a break even standpoint versus in current cost of the town. As we noted earlier, a couple of years ago, we really jack the rates up in, on the harbor committee in several areas either. Through, uh, uh, docket revenue or some of the seasonal rates that we applied. And the other opportunity in the harbor that I think. Uh, is always untapped is the fees associated with renting. Uh, the harbor for weddings and, and things that could easily make that harbor of, uh. Money-making situation and not incur costs of the taxpayer.
Uh, I, I would add on to that to say. You know, Bob, you can get a morgue in Rockport Harbor. It, they're, they're pretty easy to get. They're just a long way out. Um, there, there's a priority on the, on the ones that are, you know, close to the dock. Um, and, and that's, you know, I, I don't know a way around that. It would be hard in my mind to charge a lot more than Camden, for example. Um, which is a harbor that doesn't have the big southerly swell that we have here. I, I think somewhere between Camden and Rockland has always been. Where we've set that rate and, you know, as I've. As I've pointed out, you know, there's a lot of commercial uses to this harbor. That are really not tapped, you know, the, the towns, the town docks. Are used extensively for commercial use in the spring and the fall, you know, for a, a very minor. Fence to the user. You know, the, there's a lot of, there's a lot of money flowing through the harbor. Now the town. In, in my view, if you want to make the town, you want to make the harbor pay for itself. You know, that. I, I'm not, I'm not sure that, I, I can't say whether or not that needs to happen. That, I, I would say that's a question for the select board, but. I would, I would certainly look at the commercial side of things. Because I think that's where we are light compared to other town.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, Helen, go ahead.
Are the fees like for launching a boat, for staying overnight while your mask is steeped and that sort of thing? Um, is that based on residency so that the residents pays a little bit less than a non-resident?
Yes, uh, for launching residents pay a lower rate, um, for dockage, um, not unless. Uh, if space allows, we have a, a, a lower rate for mooring holders and Rockport residents, um, so that if somebody has, if the, all the docks. Are reserved for some reason with full paying customers, then maybe not, but very rarely does that happen. So when people wanna come in and leave their boat over, boat overnight, um, and they're a resident, they get a, a dollar a foot for a rate. Oh yeah, that's considerably cheaper than, um, what the non-resident, uh, pays.
Although I wonder what, how it was headed, Abby, I mean, like when Johansson pulls a boat over onto the docks and uses that to do all the maintenance, you know, the winter. Where they're getting it ready to then laun- haul the boat out. I'm not sure there's any, I, I don't know what they, if they pay for that at all.
Yeah, so there's a, um, there's a marine services, service permit fee that we, um, that the harbor committee, I should say, uh. Implemented a couple of years ago and it's about eight hundred and fifty dollars, I believe, um, and that just allows them to even operate on the docks. Um, and then once they're on the docks, they really don't get any preferential treatment, but if space allows, they can stay. Now with, with our additional fee of, um, after an hour, it's a five dollar an hour, that, that we're going to charge them as well. So that's another, uh, means of making the revenue when they're just sitting on the dock, even if nobody else is coming. Um, I don't have a problem with them sitting there, however, uh, we should try to, you know, recoup some of that in revenue. Um, so that will help. That new fee. Which if you guys aren't familiar, I should, I should, uh, Bill mentioned it earlier, but, um, so right, currently you get an hour on the dock, uh, grace period. Everybody can come in, unload, do what they need to. Um, and if space allows, meaning if nobody's coming in and wanting your spot after an hour. You can pay, um, five dollars an hour for every hour after that hour. Um, and you come see the harbor master, we can do, you take credit cards, we can, you know. Do a tab maybe. I'm not sure how it's gonna work. Um, this is a first, first trial, but I just think we need to incorporate, we need to capture. That, uh, that usage, um, for people that, especially like Camden residents, we have such a great launching ramp. I mean, we have the one, one of the best deepest. Launching ramps in the area, um, so. Um so, you know, Camden residents come over, they launch here, they put their boat on the dock, uh spend all day. I see them twice a year. I see them in the fall and I see them um in the spring when they. Uh so and they don't pay anything to the town of Rockport, so that's other than the ramp fee. So the ramp fee does get um paid by the by the commercial hauler. So that's also an eight hundred and fifty dollar charge. That these commercial uh haul hauling companies are paying to the town for their launches.
They pay that if there are fewer than fifty boats.
Right, right. And then other and then other commercial haulers that come in um have a forty dollar per haul uh charge unless they pay the seasonal rate.
A couple of different questions if I could, when you guys are done.
Go go ahead, Mark.
Uh Abby, how many pilings do you have?
About a hundred and fifty all told from, you know.
What's the life? To hear. What's the life expectancy of a piling?
I used to say fifteen years, but I we put one in, we put a new one in on the commercial side and the worms ate it in two years uh this time. Other ones, you know, fifteen years. So it was an amelioration of ten years for a while to replace.
Where I was going with that is, is the ten-year planning and putting it sufficient to keep you up with what you need, or do you need more?
Currently, we need more. Currently, uh there's a there's been, you know, sort of mass deterioration with the worms, whether the torito worms have just gone crazy. Or what, but I think that's uh where Bill's point of putting the pressure-treated pilings in. Um get a lot more life out of it. So if we can, you know, that six thousand dollars will be a good start. And with the help of public works, we'll put them in, but we need to get the old ones out, if anybody read that report.
Um yeah, well, that and that's, I guess, where I was going. I mean, we gotta, you know, try to ensure that we keep what we've got, so it doesn't fall into the. The harbor, not that that would happen, but that segues into my next. Question about the various sinkholes that are around near the bulkheads in various places and even over on the fisherman's side. Is there any maintenance money being put in somewhere, Bill or Abby, to to? Find out the extent of that or uh to repair those?
Those are gonna be repaired this spring, so it'll be in this year's budget.
And that's in Abby's or?
It's in the harbor budget, yes, we'll be using funds from the harbor budget.
All right, all right, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay. So we'll go on to, uh thanks, Sam and Abby. I appreciate your being here to answer the questions. Yes. We'll move on to the Conservation Commission. And we do have um. We did have, yes, there she is. Kim Kimball is the Chair of the Conservation Commission. Sorry, it takes me a minute to see, make sure everybody's here. Um. So this budget, um I hate to say is not one of those ea- easy ones, but it it's up about uh twenty percent, twenty one hundred dollars. Um and there's basically two areas that uh causes this overall increase. That's in line thirty sixty, which is the miscellaneous professional fees.
Bill, what page are you on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um. It's page.
Two twenty two.
Two hundred and. Twenty-two. So line thirty sixty, uh this, there's an increase of twenty-five hundred dollars in there, and that is for. Um some some sea level rise uh work, whether it's with a study or um or whatnot, uh working with maybe another community, that that type of thing. Um this was recommended by the Conservation Commission, so I've included it in the budget. Uh and then underwater quality monitoring is another twelve hundred dollars in there. Um and that's to uh do water testing, not in the uh in the ocean, but the the lake stewardish pro stewardish. Stewardship program, excuse me. Um to do additional lake monitoring, uh and that explained in the notes as well. Um one thing in the notes that I wanted to point out um. Is that under under the notes on line seventy-four oh one, originally, we had put twenty-five hundred, the explanation and for the twenty-five hundred dollars down there for the. Um. Sea level rise project, it really isn't a capital item, so I had moved it up to line thirty sixty. And didn't erase the notes or didn't add a note to to explain that, so just so that you're not confused on that. Um. Kim or Abby, if you want to weigh in, you certainly can can do that, or if there are any questions from anyone as well.
Hi, all. Um Bob Kennedy, I and I are here from the Conservation Commission. If you have any questions, um especially about the water quality monitoring program, because that seems to be. Um we have quite a lot of money invested in that, and we've had years of historical data that we've gained. Um projecting what kind of environmental crises we need to plan for is difficult. Uh we definitely are going to have to discuss how do we reach people in the coming year on a. On a level where we could have a public forum, you know, are we gonna have to have everything outside? Are we going to be able to hold things in the opera house? So. Um our targeted goals are still to continue to educate the population, educate the public rather, and to really reach out and let people know that. The town of Rockport is working really hard to conserve. Our environmental and conservation efforts, but if there are any questions, please, please ask.
Bob Duke.
Um could you explain the sea level rise work? What's that? What what does that entail?
Well, that came up from the harbor committee and the conservation committee coming together to discuss what should we predict is going to affect us? And then, you know, in the coming years, and sea level rise came in that um. With warming and ocean rising, the marine park, let's say, is expected to be underwater by twenty twenty-five at high high at high tide, rather, sorry. So um currently, we're talking about tidal effects. Um hopefully not catastrophic, but enough that we would see water coming over our bulkheads and um. I suppose preparing for it. I honestly don't have all the answers. I don't know, Bob Kennedy, do you have any thoughts on that one as well?
No, I think you're right. It's it's a matter of uh trying to forecast what properties might be at risk over what timeframe.
Is this hiring somebody to do this work, or did somebody just say, well, let's just put three thousand dollars in the budget?
No, it would be, it would be looking at a consultant to to hire to help with this project, to, you know, perform a study, so we can first and foremost, as Bob had said. Get an idea of what what we can anticipate and when, um and then. Start to plan how we're going to mitigate the effects of sea level rise. Um I will say that this, most likely, this twenty-five hundred dollars isn't gonna get us. It's a start. It won't get us where we need to be. I'm hoping that we can. Get a grant that maybe this is a match for for the the full project, and I have our planner. One of our new planners, Orion Thomas, that's looking at grants currently for uh this type of thing, and it may be, you know, a regional effort. I know some of the other communities along the coast have. Uh I've already started tackling this issue. Um so that was the thought from my perspective.
I'm sorry to have, I'm sorry, I have to ask another question because I now I'm I'm looking at the supporting information and. And if you look at contractual item line number three oh six oh. It has a an amount of three thousand dollars, and then down below, there's a capital item for seventy-four oh one for twenty-five hundred dollars. No, two, I'm sorry. Okay, so never mind. Yeah, sea level rise. So so I guess there's two different things going on here.
Yeah, as I said, when I opened this one, Bob, I had. I had moved it originally from the capital item. It was it was put in the capital item. Um at twenty-five hundred dollars when it was presented to me from the committee. And I'm, it's not a capital item, so I moved it up into thirty sixty and just didn't add a note underneath that on the supporting information to say that's what I did. So originally, it was five hundred dollars up under thirty sixty, and I just added the twenty-five hundred to that. Because it's not a capital item.
Seventy-four oh one is zero.
Yes, seventy-four oh one is zero in the budget.
And the thought behind those fees, so the the one of those fees would be a matching for a grant, hopefully, and the other would be to hire professionals to come in to help us plan for. Um sea level rise or what something that we don't expect yet. Primarily, we are focusing on the harbor and um ocean rising, but. Um there could also be another bug infestation. There could be something else that affects us in our forests or agriculture, so um. That's that's our best projected efforts, and I do think sometimes the Conservation Commission, we've been building this. Um budget for years, and I think it's a good example to other committees, because a lot of committees come up with ideas, but yet they haven't forethought about putting money aside and asking. All of you, you know, how you felt about it. So sometimes I think we're also just leading an example. Um. We obviously didn't use much of our budgeted money this. Fiscal term up until July first, twenty twenty-one, but um we're hoping we can do some more in twenty-one, twenty-two.
May I ask another question? I apologize. I'm sho- I apologize for taking away time, but I I see nothing in here for um. Um, yes, Glencoe, Clam Cove. We 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 know Clam Cove is 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 terrible. I mean, isn't i- isn't this committee focused on Clam Cove as well, besides Goose River and Goodies Beach and?
Yes, we are. So Clam Cove is difficult. We've actually, we are currently in exploration with um Department of Marine Resources and other local agencies. There's um. Right now, it's currently closed due to pollution that we don't exactly know what has caused it, but clamming has obviously not happened for at least fifteen to twenty years. Um one thing that we should always consider, there used to be a selfish, a shellfish committee, and we would need to reestablish that if anybody wanted to actually open Glencoe for fishing purposes, let's say. But for recreational purposes, um definitely, that's always in our forethought, but I think we haven't determined. The public access portion of it yet, but please let us know, like, if you're thinking specifically, um are you talking about ocean rising there, like sea level?
No, no, I'm talking about pollution.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, I I we we can, we can agree to disagree in terms of what's what's the most important thing. I see rise or polluted waters, but. Clam Cove is, has been historically. Uh, you know, it it's it's running, running into that beach and that, and I think anybody that walks that beach can tell you it's it's terrible. Um so it would just seem to me that this would be very high on your radar screen, that would all. Sorry, I'll back up.
The commission, um if I if I could comment, the the commission began sampling the stream that runs in from the south end of the cove. For fecal bacteria in two thousand and seven, I believe, did that for two years. Most of that is runoff from what used to be Walmart and now is uh job lots. Um. There was some uh effort to to look at the sewer connections in the trailer park that's right there between there and the highway. There is money, we have, we have discontinued sampling there, admittedly. Um but we do have money for additional bacteria sampling, either in the harbor. Or in Clam Cove, that's already in the budget.
Thank you.
No, and thank you. Um we haven't forgotten about it. I think we're sort of caught up in having um the federal, like the EPA and the. Department of Marine Resources help us get started on understanding the pollution. Um it's a pretty big undertaking, but we have not forgotten it, and um obviously, we can continue, we can start sampling again this summer. And we'll keep you updated on, you know, what our findings are. It takes years, from what I gather, with the EPA and the DMR to actually get results. Um and then they have to find that it's worthy of their time, so um we will, you know, keep you posted on that as well.
Then it occurs to me, if if what you're finding are source, Rockland sources that are contributing to the pollution, what does Rockport do about that? Exactly.
Any any other questions about the Conservation Commission's budget? Okay. Thanks, Kim and Bob.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you all.
Yeah, thanks you guys for doing that.
Thanks for your great ideas. We'll we'll keep working for you. Thank you.
Up next is the Town Clerk's Budget, page one oh four. So in this budget, um. Lines twenty-one fifteen and twenty-one twenty at the top under the uh Personnel Services. You'll notice that there's larger than the two percent increase here. These are two of the positions that were determined to be. Uh under under the, excuse me, the median wage, when I did the wage survey. Um this past this past year. And so we've corrected that within this budget. Uh we did uh provide an increase in their wages as of February first of this year. Um and then this gets them up to the median level uh completely. Um under the employee benefits, there are some changes there. A lot of that is based on the wages uh up above that, as I've just referenced. Uh health insurance um shows a slight decrease, and that's basically because our health insurance provider is not. Uh increasing rates, we'd expected them to have an increase, uh and they didn't. Um and our health insurance runs from January to December, so we're always. Off six months um when it comes to that. Um. Under the election cost line thirty nineteen. We don't have a presidential election this year, uh this next fiscal year, so then we have one less. Um vote tabulating machine that we would have to rent, so that's reduced. Travel expense thirty-one oh five, um that's to reimburse the employees for the daily uh travel that they that they must undertake um. As part of their duties, whether it's going to the, you know, going to the post office, um that type of thing, going to different cemeteries or whatnot. That's why there's an increase there. The line thirty-eight sixty records preservation. This is to continue preserving the uh town's records, permanent records. Uh there is an increased cost from the vendor when it comes to this, so it um we we do bear that cost. Increase, but it's an important um project to continue working towards. Under Supplies Postage, you'll see a two thousand dollar increase, line fifty-four twenty-five. That basically is because of the number of absentee ballots that are getting processed, so when we mail those out. Um the the postage cost is not like your typical letter, unfortunately. Under under revenues. I think probably the biggest item to talk about here or to mention is the excise tax for motor vehicles, line zero one zero nine. In the current year's budget, we have eight hundred thousand budgeted. Um those of us, those of you that were on the committee last year and in the select board. Um may remember that we had originally budgeted eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in that line for revenue. And then, because of the pandemic, we went back to it and reduced that down to eight hundred thousand. Um. I'm recommending nine hundred thousand dollars for excise tax collections. And that basically is still still maybe a little bit conservative. Um it's difficult in this pandemic year, because when you look at the excise tax collections in July and August, for example. Um and even even September. If you recall, there was leeway given to everybody that had registered vehicles, so they didn't, if they didn't. If expired in June, we'll say, they could register them July, August, September, without having any fear of of getting a ticket. Um so I think it is a little bit. The numbers are a little bit skewed this year, so it's a little bit more difficult to look at those um and provide a a good analysis. Um. That being said, if you look back at FY nineteen, the actual collected was eight hundred and ninety-four thousand. Um and so. You know, my conservative. Uh estimate for excise taxes came in at nine hundred thousand. Um. Obviously, we're seeing uh cars being, new cars being purchased, new cars being leased. Um there are still excellent rates out there. Um so when we get into the discussion phase with the Budget Committee and the Select Board on this number, I'm sure this is one that will. A little most likely get um some discussion.
Uh to add to that, too, in the prior fiscal year, the eight sixty that you're seeing, it's exactly eight hundred and sixty thousand, because we were under-collected. And we booked the rest of it as a receivable, so that eight sixty is what was budgeted, but not. Necessarily the true collected number because of what Bill was just explaining.
Right, this during the pandemic, um uh government, the Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB, came out with um a statement that said that we were allowed to. Um book excise taxes as a. Um, book excise taxes as a collectible for those that we, that we didn't collect, so what, what we've done is that we booked. Up to our budgeted amount, um, for FY, right one.
We ahead of schedule, Bill, on collection for this year?
Well, we are, but again, it's. If you look at the, at the earlier months in the fiscal year, if you look at July, August, September, it, it, you have to take them with a grain of salt. Just because of, of the. Changes in the, in the state's, um, laws for, for finding people if they weren't registering their vehicles. From the previous year.
Look at, uh, look at December and. January, where it looks like we're trending well.
Yeah, I think we still are. I think we still are. Other, other questions or comments? And again, I think the excise tax will be one that we'll, we'll have a, a good discussion over, certainly. Um, and by the time we have that discussion, we'll have another month of February to be able to have data for, uh, which obviously helps us.
I have a question about automation in the clerk's office. I guess I was sort of struck, you know, we had, I think we had three elections. Um, between the primary, the, uh, let's see, we, we had something in March, well, that's. Anyway, we've had several elections and there's a lot of work with all the absentee ballots with the handwriting of. The person's name and their address, and if we have two thousand absentee ballots, which I think is sort of the range of what we did. Are there plans to invest in some software technology? Is that allowable under main law to sort of make sure our top? Spending her time using her beautiful handwriting on envelopes day in, day out?
Linda, you, you want to answer that question? We can't see you or hear you, so I don't know if you're, there you go. Still can't hear you, Linda. I can, I can attempt to answer that Denise, so, um, because Linda, we, we still can't hear you, so, um. We, we have the technology to be able to put labels on to the absentee ballots. And I believe we started doing that after a period of time with absentee ballots, so we have everything in place that we need. To do that with, and the labels really aren't that expensive, it's just a matter of getting into that practice, I, I believe. And I certainly will ask Linda and, and I'll send out an email if, if her answer is different from mine, just so that everybody is aware of that. Other comments or questions around the town clerk's budget? Okay.
Hold on, Bill. Linda just came down to my office and she can.
Okay.
So the answer to that is, in the CBR. Which is the centralized voting, uh, registration system for the state. Um, there is, I can, can print the label right from there, so. As soon as I say issue an absentee ballot, I also say issue, um. Print out the, uh, label to put on the envelope, so I do have, um, the capability of doing that.
Great, thanks, Linda.
You're welcome.
Okay. Page two sixteen is the library budget. And so just a reminder, for those of you that haven't been through this process before, um, the gray shaded areas that are within the budget here. Are the lines that are, um, essentially paid for by the endowment funds through the library committee. Um, so you'll, all of those will add up to the revenue line, um, that we'll see later on. So if we were to make any adjustments within the gray shaded lines. Um, there's a process that has to go through, uh, with the library committee, but. Um, if we were to make any adjustments there, then we would need to make an adjustment in the revenue line to either decrease or increase. So I just want to lay that out so that everybody's aware of that, um, before we start getting into the detail. And really. A lot of the, um, differences in the budget are, um, revolve around number one COVID, but also around having a new library building. As well, so, um, if you look at line, uh, thirty oh six, professional cleaning services. The library did have professional cleaning services previously. Um, but we do have a much larger building now that we want to keep as clean as we possibly can. So we do have an increase in the cost there. Line thirty sixty miscellaneous professional services. Um, that's decreased by twenty seven thousand dollars. That was the moving expenses for moving from the temporary library into the new one, so we don't need that anymore. Miscellaneous contracts line thirty ninety, there's, uh, a decrease there, uh, that was for a. New security system for the new building, um, so we, we have completed that project, so that's down six thousand dollars. The electricity line is up a couple of thousand dollars, and that's basically because of the new building again with different systems. Um, and also we have, um, heat pumps for the building, uh, as well. And it's an estimate, I mean, we have, it's a, it's an educated estimate based on what the engineers were telling us and the architects were telling us. For the new building. Line thirty four thirty five, the building lease, so this has gone away, so that's a decrease of nine thousand dollars. From, uh, the current year, um, we're obviously not leasing the temporary space that we were using for the library, so that's gone away. Line thirty six thirty mowing landscape maintenance, that's for the, to keep the. Landscaping around the new building, um, looking as good as it should look, um. So we've got an estimated cost in there of a couple of thousand dollars. And I will say also that there are some discrepancies in the backup material, the notes for these as well, so you've probably noticed that. I won't get into those in detail. Just note that there are some errors in those as well, if you would. On the second page, page two seventeen. On the heating fuel line, you'll see a decrease there from five thousand to two thousand, again, going from one building. Uh, into a new one, the new building has, as I said, the heat pumps which are run on electricity. We do have some heating costs, uh, for propane as well, uh, because we just had a donor that, um. Paid for the installation of a new propane boiler that was not part of the original building design, um, for the boiler itself. But, um, radiant heat tubes were installed in the lower level, uh, floor, as well as in the children's room floor on the, on the main level. Um, so we will have some propane costs for that, but the, the boiler donation itself, I want to say it was nineteen thousand dollars roughly. Um, if I remember correctly, so we do have some expense there. I think that's. Generally, the major difference is overall, the library bu- budget is down almost thirty two thousand dollars from the current year. If you look on the, uh, the revenue. Side. Which I didn't grab, so I'll have to try to look at the. At the screen. Um, so you see the ninety seven thousand, seven eighteen, that's the, the reimbursement from the library committee from the endowment. And again, those numbers should add up to the gray shaded areas, um, so you have your, um. Your net budget showing, um, a slight decrease.
Have a question, Bill.
Yeah, sure, Helen.
Yeah, um, is the, you mentioned there were some discrepancies or. Miscommunication, uh, line thirty six thirty, how does that correspond to line seventeen, one seven, one six? That says it's for landscaping and two thousand dollars, but that's not reflected on the line on page two seventeen.
That's one of those errors that should have been taken out of the notes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And then just on the revenue side, Bill, one of my concerns last year is we were going from fifty three thousand in actual up to a hundred and twenty nine thousand. But I didn't have to worry about that because that would come through on fundraising and the endowment, but are we, we're pacing fine that way? It looks like we're behind by quite a bit.
Megan, Ben, do you want to answer that question?
The thirty two thousand that you see as collected is really through. Uh, December, uh, November, because we wouldn't bill them for December until January. And that just represents money that had actually been spent through November.
And I would say that I'm, I'm always trying to be conservative, um, with what we spend at the library. Because I'm just borrowing that money from the endowment from the future, so I, I, I know that. Uh, as far as the town goes, you want to get that ninety seven, but my goal is to actually spend less than that every year.
But just to remind, just to remind people, you know, if, if. If Ben, as the Department of the Library Director, spends less within those gray shaded lines. Then we don't actually get the reimbursement either, but we don't incur the expense. So at the end of the fiscal year, those numbers will, will balance out, whether it's, whether it's the full amount or perhaps, you know, we've gone over some year. Not that I'm expecting that to happen with Ben, um, but that's, that's a possibility, so those lines will balance out.
Alright, thanks.
Other questions about the library budget? Okay. Thanks, Ben.
Alright, thank you all. Have a nice night.
The Opera House budget is up next. That's, uh, page two hundred and thirty.
Hello, everybody.
Hi Drew. Okay, so the first line here, twenty one twenty, the rental agent, um, wage. You'll notice that there's a forty percent increase in this actual line item and the reason for that is because we did. Go back in and cut that, um, wage with the pandemic cuts, uh, before we finally approved this budget. Uh, going forward, and essentially what that is, we reduced the number of hours per week for the rental agent, um, for the position. Um, so we're putting that back up to hopefully where we will be renting and having performances, um. I will say that, um. Drew has been working on several other things outside of his, what would have normally been his duties, um, as, as a rental agent. During the time that he's been back to, uh, close to where he was previously. The twenty, line twenty two oh five, line twenty two twelve, uh, these items as well, uh, are reduced. Um, there's a new, a new fee schedule was adopted and kind of a new thinking was adopted where those, um. The, the renter, renters of the facility now pay for these services directly. Instead of us having to, um, build it in this way. Under line thirty oh six, professional cleaning services. This is, um, not necessarily the, uh, COVID expenses in this case, um, because we, again, the building's not, hasn't been opened, so we haven't really. Uh, incurred those, uh, professional cleaning expenses. But what this is for is a, having a professional company coming in and essentially doing a top to bottom cleaning of the building once a year. It's, it's a certainly a, a unique building and we don't have the ability to. For instance, clean the ceilings in the auditorium, um, and reach all the, you know, the cobwebs and that type of thing and the dust that, that accumulates. So the thought is that we would have, uh, professional company come in once per year and do a top to bottom, um, clean of the entire building. Just going back down through and looking. You'll see under the, um, other contractual services, the sprinkler system, the elevator inspection. Lines forty one ten, forty one thirty, the sprinkler system includes some additional repair work. And, and it's, it's not major repair work, but we want to try to make sure that our sprinkler system is in tip top shape in that building. We did have. A break. And I'll, I, I can't remember when it was, but we had a break in one of the pipes previously that flooded the Jeffrey Parker room.
It was November of, uh, twenty nineteen, but.
No wonder I can't remember it, right Drew? Yeah, before COVID, um, but this is the type of thing where we're putting in a little bit of extra money in there, the, the, the six hundred dollars is just to do some maintenance work. Like replacing sprinkler heads that might be faulty, um, potential, you know, s- small sections of line that may be faulty, need to be replaced. We have, I'm going to say we have a much better company that is doing our inspections for us, sprinkler systems for all the buildings. That are, uh, on top of this stuff much more than the previous company was. Um, so we're budgeting a little bit of funding, hopefully to catch things before they become an issue. And cost us a lot more than, than what we would like to pay. Um, the elevator inspection is just an increase in the rates. Um, and for those of you that say, well, there's no elevator in that building, it's the, um, chair lift, if you will. That's, that's, that's located within the building. Building improvements line seventy two oh five hundred capital, so you see a seventy thousand dollar number in there. Um, there's, in this budget as well, there's also some discrepancies between.
Bill, you're muted.
You want to unmute?
Sorry about that, thank you. I must have hit the button. So building improvements line seventy two oh five, seventy thousand dollars is in that line. This is to, uh, a, a complete upgrade of the stage lighting in the building. Um, I'm actually hoping. When we get to the discussion phase of the budget, I'm hoping that this item actually will, will go away, even though this is completely offset, um, in the revenue side. You'll see that again, where there's seventy thousand dollars in the revenue. I'm hoping that we can get this done. Within the current time period, um, before the end of the fiscal year. So that we can do it when the building is still closed, because the cost of the. Uh, air conditioning system, air conditioning replacement is built into this year's budget, that's that forty one thousand dollar number that you see in this year's budget. Costs a lot less than what we expect, we're expecting, so we have some revenue within the building reserve account. That we'll be able to use, hopefully to upgrade the stage lighting. We may have to do it in stages, no pun intended, but, um, depending on the funding and what we get in for. Cost proposals when it comes to that. But again, it's one of those lines that's completely, um, has a revenue, um, that matches that as well. The, uh, line seventy three oh four, audio, video and lighting equipment. So this is basically to upgrade the equipment to, that allows us to broadcast from the facility. Will also upgrade our, our live streaming capabilities as well. Um, during this, uh, pandemic, we've uncovered some areas where we weren't quite as. Prepared to do what we're trying to do, uh, on a, on a, on a regular basis when it comes to broadcasting all the meetings. And it also, thinking down the road, that if we can, um, expand our services and maybe offer. Different types of, um, programming over, over either the website or through live stream or something along those lines. Then the increase in the equipment will help us there as well, and Jeff can, Jeff Park can certainly, uh, answer some questions around that when you have them. On line seventy five sixty five, the Opera House Building Reserve, you see a, a twenty five thousand dollar budgeted expense. There was nothing in the current year budget, this is one of the pandemic cuts that was cut, um, before, um, this year's budget went final. And after the pandemic hit, so I'm putting that back in as proper level so that we can start replenishing that reserve after using it.
Bill, Bill, it's Michelle, sorry, what's in that reserve right now?
Megan, do you have that number?
Ninety four thousand.
Okay.
And, and keeping in mind, we'll, using probably, probably all of that for the different items that we're looking at. Items that we're looking at.
Sorry, so the, so the ninety-four thousand is. After, before the seventy?
Before.
Which is why we may need to do. A state. Uh, you know, the, the stage lighting may have to be done in stages. Which we can do, which is a good thing.
Bill?
Yes.
Wasn't some of that reserve? Part of the, uh, to cover the air conditioning? And so on?
Yes. And the, the seventy thousand dollar number for the lights, you know, is, is an estimate at this point. We don't have proposals in yet for that. So it's, it's a number that we, we've. Put in. We think it's going to be about that. Not a hundred percent sure. If you look at, uh, revenues, the, um, Opera House Rental Line, which is, uh, ten fifty-two. That was a number that had been reduced, um. Before this year's budget was finalized as well because of the pandemic. We're hoping that we can get back up to some level of, of renting in the fall. Uh, which will lead into next year as well, um, with, um. You know, hopefully. May, June, uh, in this next fiscal year, we can do, we can have some renting of the facility. Um, that follows through with some of the other lines as well. Um, and then again, you see the seventy thousand dollar. Use of Opera House Building Reserve there. Uh, as a complete offset.
Bill, quick question or, or more likely a comment, and this is. In line with, uh. Bob's comment around the harbor is. There's an opportunity here for. For, uh, revenue generation in. And I know that you've looked at the Opera House schedule, the fee schedule. But it really. Getting the most out of the Opera House that we can, either in frequency or in rate. For rental. And that may be more of a charge to Drew to, uh. Drive that, but I think there's a ton of upside potential. Around Opera House rental fees and frequency.
Yeah, and, and in talking with. Talking with Drew about, about that, I mean, one of the, if, if we do the stage lighting upgrade or when we do that, that's another selling point for us that would allow us to. Uh, potentially increase fees as well because. My understanding now or pre-pandemic when we had. Groups coming in to. For the stage. Is that a lot of them would bring their own lighting setups because. They didn't, we don't have what they, what they would use or what, what they would need. Um, that certainly would help us. Down the road, increase the revenue as well.
Bill, if I might, uh. I had, I have some recollection. Um, it maybe, uh. Our two. Resident Opera House gurus can, uh. Come up with a number because we've been asking, or it has been asked. For lighting for the stage. I mean, back when they were talking about doing the curtains. And there must be a number floating around somewhere. From previous. Uh. Requests that might shed some light as to. A more accurate number for the lighting. Replacement.
Yeah, no, we've, we've got a pretty solid, a, a pretty solid estimate of around sixty-two, sixty-three thousand dollars. The question then becomes though is, it, we included in that seventy thousand is any potential electrical upgrades that might be needed. And that's really, that's really an unknown at this point. Um, because. Yeah, because the new lighting may actually, you know, take less. Electricity, we won't have to do any upgrades with electrical. Uh, because of the increases in LED technology and the like, so. We're just, that's, but that's why we have that seventy thousand in there because we're, we're assuming that there may be some electrical upgrades to take.
And, and I couldn't remember what it was. I just know it had been talked about, so I should have known you'd already done that. Thank you. I had a pretty substantial. Um, you know. Estimate and, uh. Sort of a walkthrough back in the fall. Uh, two different gentlemen, actually. And I got a full, uh, listing of. Components, uh, new lighting board. Um. The labor charges, uh, several pages of a. A full lighting, you know, replacement. An upgrade. I can certainly provide that, those numbers to you in that estimate if you. The select board wanted to see that. Um, it spells out, you know, the exact type of lights we would be getting, how many we would be getting. Uh, you know, sort of basically the entire upgrade. Uh, what would happen basically is. That quote, which was right around, as Bill said, I think it's just under sixty-two thousand. Uh, is to replace all the stage lighting, everything on the stage. And above the stage, but not the lights that are actually out over the house. Um, that would be, uh. You know, probably at a later date. The, the reason for that is that the lighting over the stage is the lighting that we're having issues with. And that's more. Severely outdated and. Sort of only working intermittently. Uh, the lighting that's above the house is still functioning. Fairly well considering its age and. Typically, uh. You know, doesn't need a whole lot of maintenance or, or repair. Uh, but to answer sort of Jeff's question, what we were sort of in line to do in twenty-twenty was, you know, in the past. The Opera House really relied on people approaching us to rent this, the building. Uh, the first thing we did was sort of restructure the fee schedule to make that a little bit easier. And to cover our, our operating costs a little bit more. But what was also sort of in place for last year was a. A plan to. To promote our own shows, do some of our own programming. And front some shows and then try to earn the revenues and ticket sales and that kind of thing. I still believe that that's a really. As you mentioned, there's a lot of potential there. Rather than wait till somebody, you know, approaches us to use the Opera House. Um, obviously go out there and present more programming. Um, get into that a little bit more again, you know, that entire plan. Obviously got shut down by the pandemic and. It's still the long-term goal or hopefully sooner than later for us to. Get back into that, that plan.
Thanks Drew.
Sure.
Other, other questions around the Opera House budget? Bob do?
Yeah, my question would be just the timing of this budget and. When we heard of the harbor committee, uh, harbor, uh, budget and its revenue. Uh, there was a, basically a projection that. You know, there wasn't really going to be any rentals happening. Down in the harbor because of the pandemic, but it seems like we've. From what I can see, it looks like we're basically saying July first, where all systems go, the pandemic's over and. We're going to be filled up. Um, what, am I seeing this the wrong way?
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not thinking that, Bob. We're thinking, we're thinking hopefully September is one where. You know, would, would be opened back up and be having some rentals. Drew has done a. He's, he's reached out to doing some private rentals, so for, um, we'll say like Bay Chamber, for instance, um, or maybe it wasn't Bay Chambers. Another quartet to come in and paid. To come in to do a performance that was, that with no audience, but, but recorded it. So he's been trying to generate some interest in that regard, um, while we're, while the building is closed. But the fifteen thousand dollar revenue number for the Opera House rentals, if you look back at FY nineteen. You know, we were at twenty-one thousand dollars, um, for Opera House rentals, so. You know, I, maybe it's a little optimistic for me to think that we're going to get fifteen thousand, but I'm hoping that, you know, September first. We can actually open the building. Um, and, and that's what. All of the national experts are saying for performances and that sort of thing is that. You know, we're looking at fall. Uh, when we can do that, um. I normally probably would have a number in there of, of twenty thousand dollars for, for revenue for rentals. Uh, but, you know, because of the pandemic, we've, we've decreased that. So I'm not assuming that we'll be there, you know, July, August.
I missed most of Abby's. Uh, portion of the meeting, but I would imagine again. There's going to be more potential for things happening, of course, outside. So maybe the summertime, there could be events in the harbor that we wouldn't be able to have at the Opera House, of course. Um, I don't know about that, but. You know, we're, uh. Again, as Bill mentioned, just sort of beginning to. Get some small. Uh, you know. Sort of closed house, I call it rentals. Uh, things are not public events, but people who are renting the space for. Filming and rehearsals and things of that, like of that nature for small groups and that type of thing. Uh, just to get something going on in there and have some revenue coming in. But as far as events, again, it's hard to know. When that can really happen again.
Other questions or questions? Okay, thanks Drew.
Thank you.
Town Office Building is next on page one hundred and thirty. So I'm going to skip right down to, um. Supplies, uh, heating fuel fifty-two oh five. You'll see an increase there of seventeen hundred dollars, um. Our contract is coming due, is coming up, uh, when it comes to heating fuel. Uh, so we're expecting an increase there. Obviously, when you look back at the, what we've spent so far year to date, that's through December. We normally, we wouldn't have December's bill. To show there either. Uh, but there's a, a small amount, um. A small amount there that would have been basically November. Under fifty-four fifteen general supplies, you'll notice that there have been expenditures there. For FY twenty and again for FY twenty-one. Um, this basically was our COVID line. Uh, which is why you see expenditures there with nothing budgeted. Um, normally, you know, any supplies would be in specific categories that we had purchased, uh, pre-pandemic. Um, and so we've, we've got four thousand dollars budgeted there. For. Those type of, those types of items. If you look on the second page, page one thirty-one, under capital seventy-two oh five, Building Improvements Reserve. Uh, so we, we did not, um. This was one of the accounts, I believe, that was, uh, cut again with the pandemic. And I've, I've put twenty thousand dollars in there as a recommended amount for this next year. What that would do, well, it's, it's a couple of things right off the, right off the top was that, I'm looking at. Replacing the heat pump that's in the Richardson room. Currently, it's, it's just a cooling unit. It's not a heating unit. Uh, we do have radiant heat in that room. However, it's a fairly large room and we've noticed. Um, that it doesn't heat up, uh, as well as it, as we'd like it to. Um, but it's just a, uh, as I said, it's just a cooling unit, uh, currently. So we've got a budget or an estimate for about. Sixty-five hundred dollars to replace that unit. Uh, it has been malfunctioning over the years. Um, according to our staff. Uh, including, um, Public Works Director Mike Young. The. Rest of that line, uh, would be. Dedicated to purchasing a storage shed. Um. I don't know if anybody is here is on the marketer and the Capital Improvement Committee. We had talked about. The need at some point to begin putting money aside for. A possible renovations slash expansion of the municipal building. It's twenty-four, twenty-five years old now and, um. The space that's used as the Richardson room, which is a meeting room, which is used. Outside of the pandemic quite regularly. Um. Was originally designed from my understanding to be a storage space. Uh, and it's not really a storage space. It's a meeting space now. Um, and so we have a very. Very limited. Storage space in the building and we're really. Looking for places to store different items. We have. Items stored at the. The Old Town Office, the Public Safety Building in the basement. Um, and we also have them stored in the West Rockport. Well, we. Used to have them stored in the West Rockport Fire Station Basement before. Uh, began to flood consistently. Um, and destroyed some records in there. Um, and so. The one thought was to purchase a shed so that we could store supplies. As well as records, um, that we need to keep. Most records we have to keep for at least seven years, depending on what it is. Um, you know, if we can put them in. Containers so that they're, um. Stored into a shed that would, that would work well and we'd be able to. Uh, free up some space within the building itself. Yeah, go ahead Helen.
Would this, um, per, you say purchase a shed, would that be a, one of those? Pre-assembled sheds or are you talking about putting in a foundation and building a shed?
Yeah, it would be, it would be a. We, with the quote we got was for a, a pre-pre-made building. Um, that said. You know, if the price of building materials comes back down, it's something that Public Works could build, you know, on pads. Uh, if the prices were down, uh, as well.
You'll need to do a pad or a foundation or something to put the pre-existing, the pre-made building on, correct?
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a permanent pad though. It would, it would be, you know, mobile cement pads. They're, they're just concrete, um. Round concrete, uh, pads purchased. And that helps reduce the cost of it as well. Line seventy-three fifteen computer equipment, this is showing a reduction. Uh, and this is based on our computer schedule, computer. Excuse me, computer replacement schedule. And that's essentially it. So you'll notice that the net, uh, increase to this budget is. Twenty-four thousand, one ninety, um, and obviously twenty thousand number. In the, uh, Building Improvements Reserve is mostly. The cause of that.
I got a couple of questions when you're ready, Bill.
Sure, Mark. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um. With regard to the solar panels on the roof. How many more years do we have to pay on those or are they paid off? That would be the first part of that question. And the second part of it. What sort of? Benefit are we getting financially from those being there? I mean, how much are they offsetting? Our electrical use?
So the first question, I believe this, uh, FY twenty-two will be the last year. Of that solar power reserve payment and Megan, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, and then we'll have the money to be able to purchase those, buy out the solar panels?
That's correct.
So. Oh, okay, that goes into the third question. Go ahead.
Okay. The, the second question was about if we're saving any money with the solar panels, I believe is what. With that contract.
How much does it lower? I mean. What benefit are we seeing because of it financially?
My understanding is that we're not seeing a benefit at this point.
That's correct because we have to pay revision energy for the energy that it's producing. And then once we purchase the panels, that money that we're paying to revision energy will then become the benefit to the town.
So the sixty-five hundred goes away after this year?
Correct.
What takes its place?
There wouldn't be another payment into the reserve for that. So that sixty-five hundred would go away and then we would actually see. Most likely a reduction in our costs for electricity because then we would own the panels.
So hi- hypothetically, it would be a wash. I mean, for what, um.
I think we'll actually see a decrease.
The panels are generating about three quarters of our gen- of our energy usage at the town office.
Okay, so you got sixty-four hundred dollars, sixty-four eighty budgeted. And so.
Reduced by seventy-five percent roughly.
Yeah.
I mean, we'd have to budget for some annual maintenance and stuff of the panels. It's currently covered in our contract with revision. But I can't imagine that that would outweigh what we're going to save in energy costs.
Is, is there a guesstimate as to how much you'd have to put in? For reserve money? You know, I mean, so they've been there eight years or some number like that, uh. When? When will we need to do something? And what's the status of the reserve now? Um, and how much will we have to put in? Next year and years forward? To make sure that happens.
We haven't, we haven't looked at that going forward, Mark. I mean, we're, we're, we're just getting, well. You know, the plan would be that we would look at that after we purchase them. And then next year, when you don't put the sixty-five hundred in there, maybe you put a thousand dollars in there. Um, fair enough, yeah, but we haven't, but we haven't, we haven't done that research yet.
Yeah, fair enough.
When the panels were installed, we were told that they have a useful life of about twenty years. So we will have had them seven years when we pay them off, when we purchase them. So we will have had them seven years when we pay them off, when we purchase them from revision energy, so we'll get thirteen years. Of use out of them theoretically before we have to do something with them.
And in that thirteen years, we'll have to put. Um. A fair amount of money in over that time.
Yeah.
Anyway, no, it's good, thanks, just thinking ahead.
Makes you feel good when you drive by, though.
Want to take those apple trees up behind the police station, you know, big solar field there.
Um. Uh, other questions or comments?
So, Bill.
Yes.
The building you're talking about. Where is it? Where, where is it in the, is it the twenty thousand dollars?
That's part, yeah, part of that is the, for the building, we're, we're looking at sixty-five hundred to seven thousand for a heat pump replacement for the Richardson Room.
Oh, okay, that's in that too, that it's in that number?
Yes.
And, and what's, I mean, on the storage building, what are we talking, I mean, what's the square footage of the building?
Well.
I mean, you're just trying to build as much as you can?
Yeah, pretty much, I mean, we're, you know, we're talking like fourteen by twenty, something like that, maybe, or, or maybe even a little bit bigger. Um, and what, what that does is it really helps, I hate to say delay, but it helps delay any work on the town office building.
So, so, I mean, realistically, there's, there's, uh, there's a, there's an addition to the existing town building at some point in time. In the next, you know, few years, but this, this temp, this building will buy you, bu, buy you, you know, maybe ten years or something like that.
I, I think it probably could realistically buy us eight to ten years. I say that and the staff in the town office would probably shoot me if they heard me say that.
Well, I mean.
They live it every day, you know?
Yeah, I, I'm just astounded by all the, the needs, um, that the town has, so.
Yeah.
But we'll discuss that another day.
Yep, no, I, I understand. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Um, finance is up next on page one hundred and twenty. So line twenty-two oh five, um, the finance assistant, so this is the, the position that is now shared with assessing. Uh, for fourteen hours a week, so you'll see a reduction here in this, uh, wage, but it just is picked up in the assessing department. Um, and you also see some, uh, differences underneath the employee benefits in regards to that as well. Um, under main state retirement, um, and, uh, health insurance as well. And the health insurance, keeping in mind too, that again, we budgeted for a rate increase and we did not actually see a rate increase. So, which is always an amazing thing when it comes to health insurance. Line thirty, forty bond council slash legal fees, um. Basically, what this is, is for, um, bond council for the different bonds that we will, uh, borrow during the year. Uh, and we anticipate, um, only potentially one bond, so we've reduced that by half. And that's pretty much it, everything else has stayed, uh, the same within that budget. Under revenues, um, you'll see under interest for the checking account, uh, R O three oh two. Um, in this year's budget, we have a ten thousand dollar, um, number budgeted that was reduced. By twenty-five thousand dollars, um, before this budget was officially adopted by the town. Um, and that was part of the pre-pandemic, uh, cuts, if you will. If you look back in the previous years, you know, we, we had some very good interest at thirty-one thousand, forty-two and forty-three thousand. So I'm sure everybody is aware, interest rates are extremely low, um. We are doing okay for, I mean, we've got the sixty-one hundred through December, uh, which is why we've based the twelve thousand number off that, assuming that rates aren't going to increase. Um, substantially over the next, over the next year.
It also helped us that we didn't have as many people delay payment on their taxes as we anticipated. When I came, when we developed the ten thousand dollar number, we were estimating that more people would not be able to pay their taxes on time. And that number was significantly less than I thought it was going to be.
Yeah, our collection rate for property taxes stayed pretty much consistent with what previous years have been, which is certainly good news. Questions on the finance budget? Okay.
Decrease.
Decrease, yes, that's right, Jared. Um, debt service. It's on page two hundred and forty-six. So you do see a significant increase here overall in the budget, um, a couple of reasons for that, number one, as I mentioned in our introduction last week, the infrastructure. Bond payment, um, principal and interest is about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, um. You'll also see, um, a decrease down online sixty-two ten interest on the bond anticipation note, that's what the band stands for. So obviously, we don't have a bond anticipation note, uh, for this year, so that's going away. Um. And then the tax increment financing bond has been paid off as well, uh, in this current fiscal year, so there's a decrease there, so. Um, we do see an increase of a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, but a hundred and seventy-eight of that is for the, uh, infrastructure bond payment. Questions around debt service?
Um, Bill, excuse me.
Yes, Bob.
Uh, on the Opera House, uh, bond, is it, on the Opera House bond, how much, how much, how much longer do we pay for that?
It's a twenty, it's a twenty-year bond and it was in two thousand and fifteen, so.
Oh, it was fifteen, wow.
Yeah.
Wow, okay, we spent that money and we still have to spend more.
Right? I think, Megan, is that, is that the one that is not through the bond bank?
That's correct, we couldn't do it through the bomb bank because the Opera House is revenue generating, so we couldn't do it as a tax exempt bond.
Which is not necessarily a bad thing, Bob, because I've asked Megan to look into refinancing that potentially.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I, I would assume that the interest rate now would be much less than it, than it was back in two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah.
So she is working on that to see if, if that's a possibility.
So we can refinance certain bonds that are listed here?
That, that's the only, that's the only one that we can refinance.
Which one is that again, Bill?
Yeah, the Opera House bond.
And what's the definition of revenue raising, it looks like we're losing money there?
If we, if we can rent it out and we do actually make revenue, they don't look at the expense side, unfortunately, they look at just the revenue side. It's a good question, though, Greg. If I could show them the balance sheet, then maybe we can convince them, but I doubt it.
Right?
Other questions around, uh, debt? Okay. Um, last for tonight, page two sixty-eight, Special Assessments. This is the good news page, right?
Yeah.
So if you look under the, under the expenditures, there's no change in expenditures, um, that's just the tax billing up there, um, under revenues. So the state revenue sharing, and I touched base on this in my introduction as well, so, um, that's line R zero zero five six. So we had budgeted two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in this current year's budget, um, we're going to actually over collect that surprisingly. Um, but we were real conservative because of the pandemic again. Um. The estimate actually for this fiscal year is three hundred and eight thousand dollars that we're going to collect. Um, I, I still will believe it when I see that full number, I don't know if we'll get that full number or not, although we're on. Pretty solid pace, but the state doesn't dole that out on a consistent basis either, so keep that in mind when you look at the year-to-date numbers. Um, I did put the three oh eight in there as this year's estimate, I don't have. Uh, revenue sharing estimate numbers yet from the state for, uh, beginning in July. Uh, for next fiscal year, those are always late, uh, based on their economic forecasting committee. So I generally don't have those, I might have them by the time we get to final discussions, I hope to have that. Um, under line twenty-five hundred, use of unassigned fund balance, and I touched base on this as well. Um, the current year, we, we're using fifteen thousand. Um. Recommending three hundred thousand dollars for next year to help offset, uh, taxes as well. Um, and we discussed that pretty much at length in the introduction as well. And I'm sure that'll be a number of great debate as we get into our discussion and decision-making period. Questions or comments around this? Okay, so with that, um, what I will say, though, for our next meeting next Tuesday, um. We will be adding, for some reason, we didn't copy and paste, uh, planning, the planning budget into any of our schedules. So we will be adding that to the schedule for next Tuesday, March second. Um. I'll probably just add it at the end. Of the schedule after other public safety services, just so that you're aware. So with that, we're all done for the night, I appreciate everybody's input, questions and attention. Anything else from anybody before we say goodnight?
Thanks, Bo.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Bye, guys.
Good night.